Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We have a special presentation of the colors tonight by the Canton Police Color Guard. The Color Guard Honor Guard was started several years ago, but became dormant last year, was reactivated and revamped this year under the supervision of Detective Salas. This is a voluntary unit that attends special events and law enforcement memorials throughout the state representing the city of Canton. So we're honored tonight to have our Color Guard from the Canton Police Department present the presentation of colors Detective Salas, Officer Clark, Officer Cleland, Officer Bacon, and Officer King. So please stand and join us. They'll present the colors and we will do the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation afterwards, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we're honored to have Pastor Brando from Ministerio Unidos Mahoy International Church to deliver the invocation, please.
Thank you. I want to use Psalms 86, Psalm 12, to pray. Thank you, Lord, for our life. God of my life, our faithfulness to you, save your servants who trust in you. You are our God. Have mercy on us. Lord, we call you all day long. Bring joy to our servants, Lord, and we place our trust in you. Give us wisdom, peace, in the name of Jesus. Amen. Right face. Forward, hop.
May be seated.
I want to take advantage of this opportunity, Mayor and Board. In the name of our George and our Hispanic community, we want to give a recognition to the Chief Merrifield tonight.
Thank you, Pastor Brando, and special thanks to the Canton Police Color Guard for that presentation. To call to order our December 7, 2023 council meeting. We'll begin with the consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or revisions or any motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Guest and visitors, we do have a special guest tonight and recognitions, promotion of personnel, Chief Merrifield.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before we start the promotional process, I would like to ask Mr. Mark Gavala to come forward, please. Last week, Mr. Gavala retired from the City of Canton Police Department after 20 years of service. He worked as both a sworn officer and as a non-sworn staff and ended his career as our state certification manager. And as this Mayor and Council knows, we have won several awards for our state certification, and all of that is the result of the hard work from Mr. Gavala. So I'm going to present him with his 20-year plaque and thank him for his service. Now we will start the promotions and over the last couple of months, we've had our promotional process, which was very rigorous. There were certain requirements that people had to have to even begin the process. Then after that, they had to take a written test that they had to pass, and then after that, they went in front of a board of assessors, from outside assessors of lieutenants and above from departments all over the metro area. And as a result of that, the top scores were promoted. And so tonight, we will start the promotion of those people.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Attention to orders. The Chief of the City of Canton Police Department has reposed special trust and confidence in the dedication, valor, fidelity, and professional excellence of Tiffany Cromer. In view of these qualities and her demonstrated leadership abilities and dedicated service to the Canton Police Department, she is therefore promoted to her current rank, from her current rank of Police Sergeant, to her new rank of Police Lieutenant, effective December 6, 2023, by the authority of the Chief of Police. Attention to orders. The Chief of the City of Canton Police Department has reposed special trust and confidence in the dedication, valor, fidelity, and professional excellence of Ben Johnson. In view of these qualities and his demonstrated leadership abilities and dedicated service to the Canton Police Department, he is therefore promoted from his current rank of Police Corporal to his new rank of Police Sergeant, effective December 6, 2023, by the authority of the Chief of Police. Attention to orders. The Chief of the City of Canton Police Department has reposed special trust and confidence in the dedication, valor, fidelity, and professional excellence of Ryan Mueller. In view of these qualities and his demonstrated leadership abilities and dedicated service to the City of Canton Police Department, he is therefore promoted from his current rank of Police Corporal to his new rank of Police Sergeant, effective December 6, 2023, by the authority of Chief of Police. And last, but certainly not least, attention to orders. The Chief of the City of Canton Police Department has reposed special trust and confidence in the dedication, valor, fidelity, and professional excellence of Courtney Rogers. In view of these qualities and her demonstrated leadership abilities and dedicated service to the Canton Police Department, she is therefore promoted from her current rank of Police Officer to her new rank of Police Corporal, effective December 6, 2023, by the authority of the Chief of Police.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Chief. Again, congratulations to Lieutenant Cromer, Sergeant Mueller, Sergeant Johnson, and Corporal Rogers. Congratulations on your achievement. Earlier this evening, we have additional things to celebrate. We did have a reception for four employees that would be retiring from the city, and Chief recognized one earlier this evening. If you are still with us and haven't gone off to start celebrating your retirement yet, would you please come up front and be recognized and if we could hold our applause to all have been recognized. Again, Mark Gavala, are you still with us? Please, please come forward. And we also have, and Mark served, as you heard earlier, has served 20 years with the city. Linda Petty, our Council Payable and Payroll Coordinator. Linda, are you still here with us tonight? I think she left a little earlier, but served with the city for over 11 years. Mr. David Hatabian, please stand, has served with the city for over 13 years and will be retiring later this month. And then last but not least, our own Police Chief, Stephen Merrifield, has served with the city for nine years and will be retiring here later this month. So please give a great round of applause for these four individuals who serve us. Thank you all for your service to our city and our citizens and all you've done for our city. Moving on, in your packet, you have our draft council meeting minutes from November 16th. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. You also have in your packet a review of the October financials. I don't know if this is Ms. Forster here? Here she comes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
In your packet, you'll see the financials for October. That's the first month of our new fiscal year. And so I just wanted to cover a few items briefly to introduce you to the rollover of the financials. If you looked at the general fund, you'll notice that the largest piece of taxes in that section is made up of our insurance premium taxes. That's 80% of those revenues. You'll see in the November financials that that's when we'll start to collect our real estate and personal property taxes. If you skip through a couple pages on the SPOLOST fund, it's actually the last page of the financials, you'll see that there are no revenues reported in the month of October. That is because we did not know what the collections were in October until Tuesday of this week. SPOLOST is collected in arrears because the taxes that are paid by taxpayers in the month of October are remitted by retailers in November, and then the state returns those monies to the county and the city in December. So not reported on the financials, but for informational purposes, October sales taxes were $556,495. You'll notice there were no expenditures in the impact fees fund. That is because the work that is performed in October is usually billed in arrears also, and the invoices have to be approved by the engineers, project managers. We're just now starting to receive invoices for work performed in October. Invoices that we paid in October have been posted to the previous fiscal year 2023. So next month, you'll start to see expenditures accumulate in the capital projects fund. Our interest rates in the water fund, you may know, water fund revenue is well exceeding our budgeted estimates. So we're pleased to report that the entity's investment program is experiencing exceptional earnings, and we're maximizing the potential investment income we're allowed to retain. By law and regulations, the IRS requires that we return to them excess earnings from our invested debt proceeds. We have issued an RFP for professional arbitrage rebate services, and because we will calculate those excess earnings annually, we will manage our income and potential liability each year. Other investment in earnings in the water and sewer fund are because of high rates on our T-bills and our Georgia Fund One investments. And last but not least, I want to just comment on the ARPA fund because last week, the Government Accounting Office issued a report on the American Rescue Plan Act. And that, if you recall, in 2021, they allocated $350 billion to tribal governments, states, the District of Columbia, local governments, and U.S. territory to help cover a broad range of costs stemming from health and economic effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Highlights of the report that came out last week show that as of March 31st, the states have only obligated 60% of their ARPA money, spending just 45% of their awards. Meanwhile, cities and counties have only obligated 50% of their award, spending just 38% of their awards. If a municipality has not obligated its ARPA funds by the end of 2024, they will have to return the funds to the Treasury. The final rules regarding this grant money defines obligation to mean an order placed for property and services or entering into contracts that require payment. I bring this to your attention because it means we have 12 months to commit our remaining ARPA money, which total $1,138,393. And I wanted to bring to your attention what this means for the country. That means there's more than $136 billion in ARPA money that governments will need to commit to contracts in the next 12 months. I don't have a crystal ball, but can you imagine what that will do to inventories, contract prices, and labor cost? Just a few things to think about. The remaining ballots, as I said, that we'll need to work on in the next 12 months, $1,138,393. And I'll be happy to address any other issues you have on the financials at this meeting or in future meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Forster. Any questions for Ms. Forster? Thank you. Do we have any announcements? If not, we will move on to our 10-minute public input. We have two citizens signed up. I'm going to call your name. Please come to the podium and state your name and address and speak clearly into the microphone, please, beginning with Sandy Waite.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. I am here to talk to you about the intersection of 575 and Exit 19 as we approach Coming Highway going east. The traffic coming from the left side on the highway, Coming Highway, runs the red light all the time. Yesterday, I was, I was then at the light three times before it changed for me to go, and every time my light changed, there were three or four cars and one 18-wheeler that was across that blocked all that intersection there. We could not get out. And I'm just worried about that intersection because I'm sure somebody's going to get hurt there someday because they run the red light when they're not crowding the light. And then when we come up to, I live in Governor's, I'm sorry, I was supposed to say my name and address. I'm Sandy Waite. I make Governor's Walk at 175 Birchwood Drive. But then after I make that turn, after being there for three light changes, I try to make the left turn into Governor's Walk, and then I have all the folks coming down from the east side of the highway, then they're running the light. At least four or five people run that light every single time I'm there, and I'm very, very concerned. And I just, I think what we need is a railroad. That's the best thing I can come up with. But I appeal to you to help us with that intersection, please, sir, before somebody gets very hurt very badly. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Waite. Deb Payne?
I'm here to speak to the issue at the Laurel Canyon that's on the agenda and to see if there's any other options we can go forth with other than what's been presented. And I know that's on the agenda. We'll hear more about it, but to have a bit more maybe other options to slow the traffic in coming out and exiting and entering our community of the High Point Longleaf Drive. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Move into old business now with item A, discussion and possible action to approve an ordinance to add Chapter 2, Article 11, to provide a funding mechanism for public art. Ms. Green, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you. So this is action, asking for possible action to approve an ordinance to add Chapter 2, Article 11, which would provide a funding mechanism for public art. Just to clarify a few things, it would be 2% of the capital projects budgets. It would not be 2% of the annual budget. So there are things that this also does not include. So that would not be paving streets, maintaining facilities, our heating and air conditioning replacement project that's going on here is a good example of that. That's something that would not qualify. Underground utilities and underground infrastructure, these are things that, that this 2% capital project would not apply to. I also have an example of how we might use the 2% funding in a park project. Say that that park is costing $5 million. That would leave $100,000 allocated towards art within that project. So when we're thinking about this, we're not considering just traditional visual arts like murals or sculpture. We're really starting to think more about art that can be used functionally, that can make our city a more lovely place and a more desirable place to visit. So that could show up in ways like artist-commissioned bike racks or trash cans or park benches, or perhaps even like we have seen in some of the more prolific playgrounds around the country, like Domino Playground in Brooklyn. That's an artist-designed playground. So we're starting to think outside of the box with that public art master plan that was approved over the summer at different ways of utilizing art that the citizens of Canton might enjoy. There's also one other thing for your consideration. When the ordinance was originally drafted, we mentioned in here a public art fund. Now, after some discussion, we have realized that SPOLOST funding can't be treated in this way, and I hope that Mr. Ingram will help me elaborate on this a little bit more. But we will ask that you consider a motion to approve this amendment, this ordinance with the amendment, changing Section 2, 488, to read, "For all capital improvement projects, an amount equal to 2% of the total cost shall be allocated to public art as part of the project cost." So changing that from public art fund, which we know we can't move SPOLOST funds into separate funds that are not approved, so just 2% as part of that public art project cost. Can you elaborate a little bit on the financial portion?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Green. Just, just like she was saying, just to reiterate, one of the things in our last-minute reviews of the policy of the ordinance, we looked at Section 240, at 2-480, where it reads, "For all capital improvements projects, an amount equal to 2% of the total cost shall be allocated to the public art trust fund." And one of the concerns we had, as you mentioned, that SPOLOST funds, if you'll remember, art was not on the referendum. So we had to be careful of taking money from this fund and using SPOLOST art and transferring it to a separate fund. We would actually be out of compliance if we did that. Now, whereby no means we're saying that art cannot be a part of that project. So one of the things that we mentioned is changing the wording in 2-480 to read, "For all capital improvement projects, an amount equal to 2% of the total cost shall be allocated to public art as part of the project cost." That way, we can take a $5 million project in SPOLOST, and we can allocate as part of the whole project, we can allocate $100,000 toward that project that will be used for art as defined within this ordinance. So I think a great example was the parking deck. The parking deck, it being about, you know, just over $2 to $3 million project, that art project that's on it was a $20,000 portion of that project. That's a great example that fulfilled the 2%, even though it was before the ordinance, it would have fulfilled the 2% as established in this ordinance.
Can we answer any questions?
Just may I have one question?
Yes.
What happens to the, if you don't use all the funds for that particular project, where does the money go to? Just into an account for Arch? Does it go back to the general fund? Where does, if there's leftover amounts? Where does, if there's leftover amount from?
It would stay within that fund that originally was used to complete that project.
Okay.
And then it would have to be used in a different project or something, you know. It would have to stay in that fund. It could not be transferred from SPOLOST to a separate fund.
Okay. I guess I'm saying that whatever's left over, if you've got a hundred thousand dollars and you spend twenty thousand dollars on that particular project, where does the other eighty thousand?
So for both SPOLOST and impact fees, we collect impact fees for parks and recreation. Okay? So if we do a project that includes that two percent and say the number's supposed to be a hundred thousand, it comes in at eighty thousand. We can't take that additional twenty thousand that's left over and move it into public safety, for example, into a new facility. But we could leave it in impact fees for parks and recreation and dedicate it towards another parks and recreation project. When the voters approved the sales tax, there were certain buckets that were divided in Canton's share of SPOLOST. Parks and Recreation, General Government Buildings, Economic Development, Transportation, Public Safety. So if we do a project in Recreation, any difference in that fund that's not spent in that two percent has to stay in Recreation.
And if I may, we can still account for that, any deficit, if you will. We can still account for that and keep it internally, a record of it internally, because at a next project, we may go over. We may spend a hundred and five thousand dollars on the next project.
Section four eighty, forty-two actually addresses that. It says it's spent on the project first and then goes to other public art projects.
So it doesn't, it stays in the public art?
It has to be used for art. That's the idea, somewhere else.
Got you.
I think the, what really happened is the word trust got put in there as a trust fund. And that's what, but otherwise, we define a public art fund as just an account. And so it go into the public art fund.
It really can be a fund or account.
Right.
As long as we account for those funds that are supposed to be used for art.
But it is project-based, so it's not a separate art fund. It's just gaining money and interest and building up over time, correct?
Correct. And the other thing to remember, too, is these capital projects are being, Council's, Council is letting staff know which projects they want to move forward on. We're having those projects designed. As part of the design, we're getting a cost estimate. As part of the cost estimate, then we're turning around and saying, okay, if this project's going to be this, we need to make sure X percent or two percent of that is into public art. Then we're going out to bid to have those projects completed. Council's then awarding a bid. So there's many steps in the process where Council will know exactly what's being involved in that particular project, what the cost is and where it's located within the project.
I do have a question. So it sounds like the, is it just me or is it the price being inflated?
No.
From a standpoint of, okay, if we're going to build this for a hundred thousand dollars or we think it's going to be a hundred thousand dollars now, we need to add two percent on to that?
No, I mean, just like the example that Ms. Norton Green gave, if we were doing a park project, for example, we already know in our park projects we're going to include certain types of equipment and things that are associated with that. It may be that we just have an artist design those specific things that are going to be in it. So instead of us going to a catalog to pick out park benches, we may hire an artist to design a park bench at this particular location. It's not necessarily in addition to the project, it's work within the project.
Okay. I'll have a question, but Ms. Schmidt has a question here.
Well, I don't really have a question. I just was going to review that we've talked about this many times, especially as the Public Art Master Plan was being produced and then approved over the summer, six months ago. The South Canton Park has been an example of that. So again, just back to Mr. Pepper's point, we already, when we hired people to come up with that concept, we already included art in it because this council has said, because the residents have told us as part of the roadmap that public art is important when we're building future parks. So would that be a special playground that's designed by an artist in addition to a playground that's more traditional? Would it be a special kind of park bench? Would it be a trail with sculptures? All of those things are what successful cities with public arts do. And with this ordinance and the funding mechanism included in it and these ideas that we're talking about in parks and capital projects are not something new. We did not reinvent the wheel here. Ms. Norton Green has looked at all cities that have this similar ordinance in place already to make sure that we were doing it for best practices. New York, Chicago, Raleigh, Austin, Oswego, Oregon, Frisco, Texas, which are cities that are more in line with the size of Canton. So this has been successfully done and we're just trying to emulate it the importance of the economic development that it brings to a city.
Ms. Wilson?
Is there a cap on the trust fund?
Two percent per capital?
No, I mean, will it accrue year after year after year in the trust fund?
There is no trust fund.
Is there a cap on that fund?
Well, so, so think about it this way, with sales tax. Sales tax is capped by lifespan. So it's for a period of time. So whatever's collected in that period of time is what's available for use. So when the current sales tax that starts in July of next year ends, whatever two percent of the eligible projects would be in that would be spent out of that fund towards public art. In impact fees, we have to do methodologies, you know, every, every, every so many years. And so as we're doing projects and you're approving projects, it's based on whatever's in the fund and what we spend on those particular projects. So you could have a residual that accumulates, but at some point, you have to spend all the SPOLOST dollars that were collected. So it couldn't just continue on in infinity. Does that make sense?
At the end of a year, is it, does the trust fund go to zero at the end of each year? Unless, if a project's completed, the project that it was, that the money was collected for and it's completed and there's still money in the trust fund, does it carry over?
Yes. The idea would, there would be an account. We're not going to do trust fund, remember? We're taking that out. So it's just an account. And it would accumulate, that's the idea. If you don't spend it all, it goes for other art projects. So the council will decide whether to spend it or not.
Okay. And, but there's no cap? It can accumulate, it can accumulate, okay.
And we already do that for parks and recreation, is that correct? Isn't that the example you just gave? If we don't spend all the money on a park, then that money that was designated for that park can then be used for a different park and recreation project?
The only caveat to that really is impact fees because impact fees can only be used for additional capacity. So it's not maintenance-related, it is brand-new construction, facilities, and what have you. SPOLOST is called out specifically by the voters as to what types of projects you can do.
And while we're, while we are talking about SPOLOST and impact fees is because that's what funds capital projects, SPOLOST and impact fees and not taxpayer dollars, basically, so. The ordinance also allows, on a capital project, the two percent, Council can say, well, this is a very large capital project. Perhaps one percent would be more appropriate for this project than two percent. So every project, Council has the ability to review that allotment and basically adjust if they feel it's necessary.
We also have art staff that's making recommendations. If there's a park plan, Ms. Norton Green and her team are going to be looking and saying, what do we think goes in here? If it's actually not going to cost a hundred thousand dollars, it's not like they're going to then say, oh, but we need a hundred thousand dollars. They're going to know, they're going to have an idea of how much a project costs, just like we do for all of our projects.
I guess my concern, it's not a concern, I think it's great that they're finding a way to fund this. I just, I didn't know if it, you know, after three years, you had seven hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars sitting in that fund with nothing, you know, maybe not a big capital project coming up, you know. And that money, it can't be allocated for anything else, it's just there for...
There is no money unless there's a capital project.
The other thing to remember is,
I don't think that's right.
You're appropriating the budget on an annual basis. So you're going to be appropriating funds for capital projects or you're going to be amending a budget for a capital project. So you will ultimately have the say in what is spent on those projects. And you will know as part of the project what percentage of that is eligible. So if you read through the ordinance, for instance, the design of a project or property acquisition related to a project, those costs are not part of that two percent formula. We will tell you as you sit down and review a project to approve what is appropriate for the two percent formula and what that number is and what the anticipated project type is for that amount.
I think the answer to your question is it can be spent elsewhere.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, On other art projects.
Okay.
So it just has to be spent on art. Public art, which is defined in our public art policy, which is defined to be a lot of different things. But what this ordinance says is you spend it on the project first, then you spend it on other areas.
And it will have to be spent in the area of the funding it's coming from. So if it is parks and recreation, SPOLOST or impact fees, it can't be moved into transportation expenditures or economic development expenditures or general government building expenditures. It will have to stay with parks and recreation.
And basically, the ordinance simply institutionalizes, you know, the commitment we made with the Public Arts Master Plan is that we're committed to producing, providing public arts throughout the city as part of the capital projects that we're doing in the city to ensuring that we're committing to public arts, you know, as we move forward, so.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah, I just wanted to review again as sort of a culmination of the last four years of trying to bring public and cultural arts to Canton with the help of this team, our residents, and the City of Canton staff. Larry Hanson, who runs the Georgia Municipal Association, which teaches local governments best practices and how to best run their cities for their residents, says this about public art. "When Georgia cities champion and invest in the arts, our communities are more alive and filled with a sense of wonder, excitement, and opportunity. The arts have a profound impact on economic development, enhancing community and civic pride. Investments in arts attract tourists, generate revenue, and create jobs. Cultural institutions become anchors for local businesses, fueling the growth of restaurants, shops, and hotels. Embracing and championing the arts builds and sustains economic prosperity. The arts have the power to transform lives, communities, and cities. The arts unite. I am thrilled to be working with the staff and residents of Canton who celebrate and cherish arts for Canton." And with that, I motion to approve the ordinance to add Chapter Two, to provide for a funding mechanism for public art with the amendment, "For all capital improvement projects, an amount equal to two percent of the total cost shall be allocated to public arts as part of the project costs."
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Item B, discussion and possible action on easement-encroachment agreement with Summer Walk owner. Ms. Watson?
Thank you, Mayor. As we discussed at the last meeting, this is for an encroachment agreement in Summer Walk. Generally, staff handles these administratively, but the owner of Summer Walk Towns would like to have a legal document noting the easement-encroachment. Staff would recommend authorizing the mayor to sign the easement-encroachment agreement with Summer Walk owner, LLC. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Watson? Again, Ms. Watson, this is standard with developers and?
Yeah. Every so often, we have issues where a homeowner or builder, property owner, wants to put something inside of a sanitary sewer easement or storm easement. And so we would generally have them sign a letter stating that if the city were to need to get into that easement, that they wouldn't hold the city liable for any of the damages that are caused, whatever's in the easement. And so with this owner, they just wanted an actual legal document, which requires this approval by the council.
Thank you for that explanation. Any questions for Ms. Watson?
If there aren't, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Tullum?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the easement-encroachment agreement with Summer Walk owner, LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Moving into new business with item A, discussion of appeal request of the Board of Appeals' approval of variances to eliminate sidewalk and beauty strips along Railroad Street. Mr. Turner, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a discussion for the appeal of decision of the Board of Appeals. Last week at the meeting, they gave a variance to the sidewalk and beauty strip requirements. A resident has found that he disagrees and would like to file an appeal and have the council consider his appeal. If y'all choose to hear it, we could have to hold a public hearing as soon as we can have one advertised. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Turner? Any comments?
I will, at the risk of dominating the motions, I'll make a motion that we deny this request from the citizen.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, or any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving on, item B, discussion of proposed Unified Development Code UDC amendments. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. As you are well aware, this is a longcoming amendment in terms of doing some house cleaning. And the biggest item on there is amending the zoning districts in the Unified Development Code. At the request of the elected officials, staff has undertook the task of amending the code to eliminate several of the single-family zoning districts and leaving a single residential zoning district of R-ten, which is a single-family detached district with a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. Among other items in this ordinance is to provide for changes to the R-ten district to allow for variances from the development standards with master plan and conditional use approval, which would come before the elected body as a public hearing. Also, to delete the RA-six category, to delete the NC zoning category, that is neighborhood commercial, to amend Chapter one oh five by replacing Board of Zoning Appeals with Board of Appeals, it's more or less a house cleaning portion, change where it says BZA with BOA, to amend Table one oh two dash four by replacing the P, which stands for permitted, with a C in the CBD column for townhomes, which requires them to have a conditional use permit when they're constructed in the central business district, and to make the use conditional, to amend Chapter one oh four point oh five A to allow cottage housing as an allowed use in the central business district. This ordinance will come back before this body at the next council meeting as a public hearing. At that time, you may or may not take action upon it. And if we want to go to the next item, discussion of proposed zoning map amendment, this would be a revised zoning map that will incorporate the changes in the zoning districts that I just discussed. And that will also come as a And that will also come as a public hearing item at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. As you alluded, this has been something that staff, council, has been working on for a long time, especially this past year as the abeyance has been in place. As we've been reviewing many items to determine the best practices of kind of growth and development of the city going forward. We've had known issues with our zoning ordinance and classifications being complex, redundant, confusing, et cetera, et cetera. A zoning map having some issues and having some mistakes being discovered in the process. Again, this is something we've been looking at for quite a while. We've been talking about it in many meetings ad nauseam. So this is nothing, nothing new. But Mr. Peppers or Mr. Green, can one of you just kind of review the overall process? Or Mr. Green, or Mr. Dyer, of when this was kind of started, how we've gone about this and all the items have been considered as part of the abeyance? I know we extended the abeyance to, this is the last kind of component of review of all the documents have been reviewed, processes have been reviewed as part of this process. And just kind of highlight that, what we've been going through on this process.
Yeah, so one of the things that we talked about in terms of simplifying the zoning ordinance, the UDC, would be to provide for a default category where somebody didn't have to come back for rezoning to build residential housing. The question then was going to be, what size was that default zoning category? And so the proposal is that the default would be 10,000 square foot, meaning if you were able, if you had a piece of property and you were able to meet all the development standards, which is 50-foot of road frontage with the lot, you would not have to come seek permission. You still have to meet all the rules, you have to go through the staff stuff. You just don't want to get rezoned if you can meet the 10,000-square-foot lot standard requirements. So that was the idea, as we talked about. It was rather than slicing it up so much to provide something to encourage redevelopment, and it was just a question of what size lot you were going to have as a default. The other parts, I think, are pretty much just cleanup from issues that we've had, just conflicts and things like that. But, and so a lot of this is just, once you make that change, then we're eliminating references to R-40, R-20, and so forth.
Thank you. And then Mr. Peppers, in addition to the zoning, can you review the other items that were viewed as part of the the abeyance process and overview and what we've been, you know, what's been in the works over the past year since, I guess, last November and before this whole process began?
Sure. The council put the abeyance in after the November 1st date last year for applications for public hearings. And basically, what the document spelled out was that we wanted to get further along in our water pollution control plant project, which is ending Phase 1 now. We wanted to get an update to our housing study, which was done prior to COVID and prior to the last census, which was completed last winter. We wanted to finalize our transportation master plan, which was done. We want to get started on our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is started. And then we wanted to review all of the zoning codes and all of the zoning ordinances of the city to see what needed to be cleaned up, what could be consolidated to make it easier for the public, the developers, and the council to understand all of those zoning areas. One of the issues that I think staff brought up to council as part of that was we saw a number of individuals who were going out and they were basically, you know, consolidating parcels as part of a sale so that they could do master plan development. They could get as many acres as they could and come to council seeking the maximum densities that would be allowed. And the idea with coming up with a common approved residential zoning was instead of now having a developer or a property owner that's trying to amass and build as many dense neighborhoods as they can, where we have a property owner that has two acres, for instance, and they don't need all the two acres. If they would like to sell one of those acres or a quarter of an acre for the development of another home, they could do that, and it would not require a full rezoning process. But as Mr. Dyer said, they still have to meet all the other codes that we have. So if you have somebody, for instance, that has a long, narrow property, but it only has so many feet of road frontage, they're not likely going to be able to subdivide without adding some public roadway to do such because they'll have to meet that part of our code. Additionally, when you get so many units, you have to deal with stormwater issues. We don't allow private streets unless those private streets are built to public road standards. So there's a lot of things that an individual would have to do if they're going to build more than one home on the lot.
Thank you. So this process, I mean, it's not a typical zoning case. This is cities changing its ordinance. So we are having a public hearing at the next meeting to get feedback. We're already getting feedback from the public. So it's an education process for all of us, so we've been working on it and to try to understand it better. But really, the goal of the entire process and the abeyance has been to better manage and control growth and to control those high-density developments and limits in the city. And it's not, certainly, the goal of this ordinance is not to increase density and, you know, spur growth in the city. So just those statements, putting those out there. So again, we want input and feedback, but we also want to get, you know, factual information out there. We're trying to make our codes and ordinance and zoning better, clearer, and better for all of our citizens, so.
Are you open for some discussion?
Certainly.
Before we, like, next meeting, I believe, we'll have the public hearing, and then we'll vote. Before we vote, I want to propose a scenario. Suppose I live in a long-established neighborhood zoned R-40 with adequate road frontage and all the lots are at least two acres with one house, some with four to six to eight acres with only one house. My neighbor, who also has a two-acre lot with one home, decides to sell. Developer comes in and builds seven more houses and eight AUDs on his two acres, which is now 16 structures on that two acres. He can do so because we will have collapsed zoning from R-40 to R-10. The council will not have to go before council for approval if all the requirements are met. I want us to think about that before we go, you know, before we vote on it. I'm concerned, and so I don't know what I'm missing.
Well, there is a, one of the standards is how much of the lot area can actually have buildings on it. So we'd have to look at that. I don't remember what those...
But if it's been collapsed from R-40 to R-10, when would you be looking, when would we be looking at it?
Right, well, each lot. So the question becomes whether you can have the AUDs. That would be the issue with lot coverage.
And so I heard Billy say something about stormwater. You know, that would be the issue.
Well, then you have those things, right.
But if a developer comes in to my neighbor and says, "I want to buy your two acres", he buys the two acres and then he puts up the structures, he doesn't have to come before a house.
Well, so the two acres would have, for eight structures, the two acres would have to have 400 feet of road frontage so that you could divide them up.
Right, if they have all the requirements. That's what I'm saying. If they have all the requirements, they don't have to come to council. So food for thought. I don't know what I'm missing.
No, you're not missing anything. I mean, that's exactly right.
Right.
The idea is that you could, if 10,000 is not the right number, you think of something else. But the idea is to have something that was default.
Right.
So that people are...
Well, that's why I really wanted to bring it up because I think it is food for thought because we have a lot of people who have, they have a lot of property with one house and they don't want people encroaching into their long-established neighborhood with a whole bunch of houses.
I think that scenario is certainly concerning. My question would be, how many of those houses on two acres have 400 feet of road frontage?
Wouldn't they, if they built a road to city or county specs, they don't have to have 400 feet of, if they have a road...
They could build a new road, yes.
That's what I'm saying. So I mean, you know, again, a two-acre, two-acre track can hold a lot of 10,000-square-foot houses. They can afford to build a new road. They can afford detention. They can afford everything you need to do to develop it. And then that could be in a subdivision that's well-established with no HOA or no covenants or restrictions. And then you've got a, you know, a small house enclave in a, you know, a 40-year-old subdivision in town. I don't know if it's just something that we move forward with new development at the 10,000-square-foot lots. And then on a case-by-case basis, old, established, you know, pieces of property in the city, maybe that comes before the council and it's...
Well, that would be, I mean, one option we could do is to say if there's already a structure on it, that that property has, and had an older zoning, that it's still the, I mean, at that point, you just wouldn't make the change. I guess now I'm thinking about it. You just, you would just do nothing, leave the status quo as is.
But there are several parcels in the city that have the ability, you know, smaller. And I mean, it's a good thing for a developer to be able to do that. I get that. But again, I'm looking at examples of older subdivisions that have been here forever that have vacant lots. And this could happen because there's, you know, and that is a concern. And that's been a concern that I've gotten, you know, a lot of correspondence from residents just in the last few days about. So I just feel like it's just more time to think about it and digest it. Again, I'm new, so I apologize if it's been, I know y'all have talked about it, but I'm just not that aware of it.
Well, I'm not new, and we've talked about it, but I did not realize how it could affect certain areas until I started getting a lot of calls. So I'm just putting it out there before we vote next time.
Yeah. We certainly have, like, you know, two weeks for the public hearing. Then we, of course, public hearing, we hear from the public and hear what concerns, and we'll, I'm sure we'll get more before then. But I think, you know, looking at the scenarios of those and looking at those areas of the city and what, you know, what are the possibilities and, you know, what could someone do on two acres? If you add a public road on two acres, how much property you have left to construct a house and...
Well, that, yeah, if we're talking about what's going to be the number, there's a lot of factors that dictate that. How much you're having to take up with infrastructure and all of that. You could have a minimum lot size. We had talked about that as an issue as well, to say it's, for R-10, there's a minimum lot size so that it wouldn't be two acres being divided up. You could say you can't do it in a platted subdivision. That would be another way that it's, you couldn't subdivide in a lot that's in a platted subdivision. I'm really brainstorming at this point. But, so there would be some ways to limit it for the established subdivisions that already...
And at one, at R-40.
Or just don't do anything, right? Just leave it the way it is.
Right.
I mean, that's always an option.
Rather than putting a lot of restrictions on one, on one, on R-10, you could leave it like it is because the restrictions are already there.
The other thing you have to remember about some of the older neighborhoods is there's things that surround those older neighborhoods that are more dense. And so you don't get into the same issue with spot zoning when someone wants to go into a development residential with significant densities that you might with just keeping it at an R. So for example, you know, I'm going to take East Main Street as an example. When you look at the properties as you're going out of downtown, those are very dense properties from the standpoint that those are small lots with a lot of lot coverage. That may neighbor one of those properties that might be a larger lot. And that individual may want to come in and seek a higher density at that point than what a developer might want to get at a smaller density for an R or a 10,000-square-foot lot, so, you know.
But when it was purchased, it was zoned R-40. That's kind of the point I'm making.
Well, when it was purchased, most of those weren't zoned R-40. Most of them weren't even zoned because there was no county zoning at the point. It was, or city zoning at the point, it was...
But they've evolved.
Correct.
They've evolved.
Correct.
And we're just wanting to collapse something that has evolved over the years.
That's correct.
And I do think one of the things that led us to this point is thinking about redevelopment in areas that will need to be redeveloped at some point. And a lot of those areas have small lots already. And so you could just change the zoning category of those areas. You could just, but then that's, you're talking about rezoning people and all that, so.
Right, and I get it. Density belongs in the city, it really, in the cities, it does. But I just don't want us to do something that would harm older, established neighborhoods. And I'd rather they didn't look like the neighborhoods that have come in, that we, you know, that we allow, that are good. But older, established neighborhoods, I'd like to protect in some way.
I do like condensing a lot of the stuff that's not necessary because it is confusing. And if you're coming in as an applicant, it does, I mean, there's a lot of different options. So getting that, you know, that number down, I think, is a great idea. Just the concern of, you know, basically, it's mine and Sean's ward, you know, and some of Joe Ellen's. It seems like there's a lot of older, established houses on acreage, and that's a concern of the constituents.
Any further comments? Okay, thank you. So item D, discussion of proposal from Keck and Wood for professional services associated with the North Canton Cottage Village. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a discussion in regards to a proposal from Keck and Wood for professional services. Discussions with city council previously suggested the staff meet with Keck and Wood and have them put together a proposal to move forward with the North Canton Cottage Village project. Bethany Watson and I did meet with Keck and Wood personnel on the site prior to them putting the proposal together. The proposal does include surveying. Staff could not find a digital copy of the original survey that was done by Doolo Rockus Engineering back in '08, '09, somewhere along there. It includes a geotechnical exploration report. There is some exposed rock on the site. Concept plan that has more engineering associated with it than the original concept plan Mr. Oliver put together that would address standards relative to streets and things of that nature. Civil site development plan or land disturbance plans, landscaping plan, hydrology, design, stormwater report, and civil permitting. The proposal does not include any meetings with Keck and Wood staff. They did include a line item that if meetings with Keck and Wood is required, it would be at an hourly rate. Same for construction management, if you will. That was not part of the proposal. Total cost for all of the services listed within the proposals, $102,600. City manager did ask me to get back with Keck and Wood because the proposal itself did not include a timeline. Keck and Wood did email a timeline. I forwarded that email from Keck and Wood to the council members with the timeline. Total timeline shows everything in a nine-month timeframe. I would note within that timeline that 100% civil plans would be available and presented to the city at the end of June, which is a six-month timeframe. You did also have, besides the timeline, a markup from Keck and Wood for the surveyors in regards to identifying some of the things on-site that are known out there and to refine that as part of the survey. I'm here to answer any questions. This should be a coming back before you in a couple of weeks for a possible decision. And based upon any questions that I can't answer that come up from the council members tonight, I will get back with Keck and Wood and provide that prior to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. So again, this is, just to clarify, this is for the engineering services for the site plan that was approved by council. And it's to determine whether that site plan is feasible based on whatever the, the, the engineering determines. And that costs, those costs would be then, if we do decide that that plan is feasible, those costs would be then applied to the cost of those single-family homes. If it's determined, my understanding is determined through the engineering services that it's not feasible to do those nine or ten homes, then it'd be option for council to decide that the property is not feasible for that project. That the, our, uh, opportunity to possibly sell the land for commercial uses is already zoned for. And then move on, but we need to do the step to determine whether it's feasible to do that project as the site plan that has been approved by council. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
For the most part, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This proposal for the professional services through Keck and Wood for a hundred and two thousand, six hundred dollars. If you recall, back in the springtime, when we discussed the North Canton Cottage Village, I had worked with some local builders and developers, and we had some construction costs to move this project along of about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This would be added with the hundred and two thousand to come up with a six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar cost on the front end, if you will, with nine units and, and all it works out, about seventy thousand dollars per unit related to the professional services as well as the construction cost. And if you recall, Mr. Oliver proposed maximum one thousand square foot units be built part of this project at two hundred dollars a square foot. Two hundred thousand plus the sixty-nine thousand, we're looking at somewhere around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars total cost per unit.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Patton, the hundred and two thousand, six hundred dollar quote, you've been around the block a few times, lots of experience in this area. Is that, is that a reasonable price, you think, for the engineering services that they're quoting?
My opinion, yes. Also spoke with Bethany Watson in regards to the proposal and pricing. And it seems to be in line, if you will, with general accepted pricing for all of these services.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Item E, discussion of possible action on work order management system for Public Works. Ms. Penley.
Good evening. I am here for the discussion of the Public Works work order system. Currently, Public Works has a, we have a paperwork order system that we use. We have realized with the growth of the city and also the many services that Public Works provides, its residents, especially with the added bulk item pickup, yard debris bags, an array of, of, of things that we do. We've really felt the need for a more efficient system within, within the department. We started looking early summer at some different systems that are already out there and ready to go. We noticed that the systems were anywhere from a hundred thousand dollars to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. For the system, that doesn't include the ongoing maintenance and any kind of licensing or certificates that we would need that were on an annual basis. So upon further review, we realized that we can, the A's, the GIS, or ARC GIS, sorry, offers a system. They can build us a system. They've done it for other municipalities, and the fact that we use GIS so much within our department, especially pinpointing, you know, different areas of sidewalk or a pothole, things like that. So we reached out to them and we reached out to Interdev, who currently, we are currently in contract with them for the city, and discussed that they have done this for some other municipalities. So we asked them, we asked Interdev, some of the items that we were currently looking for was a user-friendly interface, mobile accessibility, so our crews could use their cell phones, an app on their cellphone, or an iPad. Reporting, reporting and analytics featuring for tracking such as when it comes time to pave, and there's a particular road that we have filled a pothole on ten times this year. We can go and assess that to see if we need to actually pave that entire street, what's going on with it. Also, work order priors, prioritization, and once again, the featuring the GIS. We also asked for a system that employees could make notes on, take pictures, right there in the field on-site. So they pulled from some of, some of their other cities to show us kind of what they could do, and it falls right in line with what we're currently looking for. So Interdev sent us a quote, which I believe you guys received, it should be in the packet, for thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars for the development of the system. Basically, that includes a person that would be in the Public Works Department one day a week. It would take up to twelve months for the actual system to be up and running, along with some training for our employees. We have, we're not asking for action on anything tonight because we are still discussing with Interdev the ongoing maintenance after a year is up, what the ongoing cost would be. So we have, we're just looking for discussion tonight until hopefully next council meeting on the twenty-first, we should have some actual numbers for that. Also, Esri sent us a quote for sixty-six hundred dollars that would be for twelve of the licensings that we would need to run the program. I know in the packet it says anywhere between six thousand and eleven thousand dollars. We actually received a full quote for them for sixty-six hundred. I think that's it. Do y'all have any questions?
Okay. So you're not asking for action tonight? The agenda said possible action. Okay, just to clarify. So, okay. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Penley, Ms. McGrew?
Thank you, Ms. Penley. Will the city own the project when it's done? Will they own the program?
That I do not know. I can find out definitely and, and answer that question at the next meeting.
Sure. I don't expect you to know the answers tonight, but this, things I'm curious about. And this sixty-six hundred dollars is for?
It's for the twelve licensing to use the, the dashboard, like their actual system. We currently have licensing in-house. Anyone that has a login to that particular system, we use it. We have a one for stormwater that we use. And this would be able so that the, when we send crews out, they would have their own login so they could go in and create work orders and make changes.
Would there be a yearly assessment, relicensing fee?
Yes. The, the sixty-six hundred dollars would be an annual fee.
Right. And we only need twelve?
That's what, that's what we're going with right now. I believe honestly, we may only need ten. We went with twelve. We're kind of, we'll fill that out. I don't foresee us needing more than twelve.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Ms. Smith?
Ms. Penley, did you say the alternatives to this were over a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, we were quite surprised. I was personally. We looked into two different systems, and one was a hundred thousand dollars, and it wasn't up to par with what we were looking for. The other one was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we were kind of on board with that until we realized that they don't want to work with your GIS system because it's their system and they don't want to integrate our mapping into that. So that was one thing we were like, if we can do this maybe a little bit more in-house with Interdev, that's what we were looking at.
Kudos for figuring out an out-of-the-box idea that saves so much money. I know Bill's probably feeling really excited about that right now.
I heard that. I appreciate that, so. And are, are you currently using just manual work orders and?
We are. It's, we have literally just a, it's a piece of paper that we mocked up with the different departments, different issues that, more common issues that come up in the Public Works Department. And it's just gotten to the point where we are leaving a huge paper trail. And things are just, they're not running as smoothly as we would like them to be just because we've gotten so busy. It used to work in the past.
All, all that you guys do, I'm impressed that you're so efficient with, with what you're working with, so.
Can I put you on the spot for a second?
Sure.
How many bulk item pickups do we have in a month?
I believe this month we had over five hundred. I'm pretty sure that's what's in the operations report that we're currently working on, the monthly operations report. We have about five hundred a month, I would say. And then our bags, especially right now with leaves, probably, and, and these are just the work orders. I think we have close to a thousand work orders for the month. That is one to eight bags per household that we pick up.
Wow.
Yes. It's a lot.
Does, does the bulk mean brush pickup too? Is that?
No, bulky items are more of like, if you have an old dresser and you don't have a truck or you don't have a way to get it to the collection site. It's something that when we had a contract with Waste Management, they used to do that. And then they actually stopped doing it as well. But Waste Pro no longer does that, who's our current trash provider. They no longer do that. So forgive me if I'm wrong, but from my understanding, you know, we didn't want residents to lose that service because we changed trash providers.
And, and we also didn't want them discarding those items elsewhere in the city.
Yes.
Illegally.
How many brush pickups?
Yeah. Brush pickups, in the summertime, it's, it's a lot. In the summertime, it really is. Right now, that has slowed down because it's more leaves, but I would say it fluctuates because obviously in the summer, it's more brush. And then in the, the fall and winter, it's more of your leaf pickup. But I would say around a month, probably around eight hundred.
And I'll mention, I'll mention this one thing too about Public Works. So like with everything else, sometimes we have specialized equipment that goes down. And it is very difficult to get some of that equipment repaired, parts in-house for that equipment. So when we lose a leaf truck, for instance, that can go out and vacuum leaves quickly, it takes a lot for us to replace that when we're picking up individual bags and bringing back to our manifest.
Yes.
And our Team Clean Canton group is three employees that run the roll-off site and do almost all of those brush pickups, leaf and bulky item pickups. That is one of the most underappreciated group of workers in the city, and they work very hard. And what's, what, to me is what, what is really remarkable about it is when you go to other cities, that doesn't exist. That's not a service that exists. So, you know, sometimes, sometimes we, we talk to you about sanitation fund, for instance, and it's not, it's not meeting what it needs to meet. It's all of those additional services that we provide, and then we have to pay to dispose of those things, but we do it because we want to keep the city clean. We don't want that stuff on the side of the road or left behind somebody's shopping center. We want them handled. Kelly does a good job running that group. I appreciate her.
We, we appreciate you. You had us at, you know, a hundred thousand dollar savings, but all this, just, just support your case even further, so. Get us that hard number by the next meeting, okay?
Definitely.
Thank you, Ms. Penley.
Thank you.
Item F, discussion of a proposed prefabrication bathroom installation at Edwah River Park Amphitheater. Mr. Dodson, welcome. You want to take that in the next one?
That me? Okay. Thanks, Mayor, Council. So I'm here tonight to discuss and propose a prefabricated bathroom to be installed at Edwah River Parks, more specifically near the amphitheater area. I can't believe you used that drawing. That was me just showing you where it was supposed to be.
I told you I was going to put it up there.
Yeah, I had my son, two-year-old son, help me with that, so. But yes, the, the current location that we've chosen, the reason behind that is with our new trail system, we've found a lot more people are coming in in the park and making that immediate right, hopping on the trail and going eastward. And a lot of people that come into the park have no idea that we even have a bathroom or a parking lot to park in on the other side. So this would alleviate them from having to, or prevent them from having to go all the way to the other side of the park and make that extra trip to use the bathroom. Along with that, we also feel like we've gotten so populated in our parks that we're kind of getting overrun, our facilities. This would take a little burden off of what we feel like is not quite enough to keep up with the foot traffic we have currently. This would provide four extra family-sized stalls with this particular unit. Along with that, we would also have special events that currently we require a handful of portable restrooms. I think we all know, we'd much rather go to a walk-in facility than we would a portable restroom. So this would provide a surplus for that as well. The particular bathroom unit that we were going to be installing will have a red brick face to match our existing structure that we have at Edwah River Park. Like I said, it will have four individual stalls that are family-sized. We did install a prefabricated bathroom around this time last year at Heritage Park, and we are extremely happy with the overall maintenance of that facility, the durability. It is extremely simple. There's a sink, a toilet, and a push button, and there's nothing that can break, damage. If it gets vandalized, it's very simple and very cost-efficient to work on. So the current cost for this particular restroom unit, which is a hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred, twenty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents, I'm not asking for an action on this item tonight, but I will be coming back later this month to ask for approval for this particular unit in location. I will like to say there is an estimated additional cost of about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for site work to run power, water, sewer, and do minor grading at that particular location. With that, I'll answer any questions, concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. And just to clarify, this is funded by SPOST?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Dodson? Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Dodson, you said that the face would be red brick?
Yes, ma'am.
What would the other three, three sides be?
I should have been more specific. The, all three sides will be brick. The fascia boards will match the existing trim of the concession stand bathroom area. And then it'll have a sloped back pitch roof, and it will have just standard black shingles.
Great. I'd like to plant a couple of seeds here, if I may. Water fountain, bottle filling station with a dog water bowl too.
Okay. I will, I will see if that is an option. I know that the, the unit we are buying is coming with a water fountain, bottle filler station on it. But as far as the dog filler, I think that's something I can install.
And another, another thing, just think about, is a bench for somebody who's resting, waiting for somebody who's going into the restroom?
Yes, ma'am. With this, the additional twenty-five to thirty for site work, that will include a sidewalk from the amphitheater sidewalk, what I call the amphitheater sidewalk, to the structure around the entire perimeter will have a ten-foot sidewalk buffer around it. And then if we decide to do something with the gravel parking lot in the future, pave it, we will still be able to attach that parking lot to that bathroom structure going forward in the future. All we would need to do is just a section of sidewalk to it.
And I assume that there's ADA compliant facilities inside also?
Yes, ma'am. The drawings that I have show that it has the full 360 for wheelchair access. And they do have all the ADA compliance to them. Each, all four stalls do.
Thanks so much.
Any other questions? Okay. And the next related issue, discussion proposed prefabricated bathroom installation at Bowling Park.
So for this particular discussion, this location. Gets me every time. I'll do better next time, I promise. So for Bowling Park, we want to take a little bit of a different approach. I know currently, I think Mayor and Council is aware, we have nothing close to our backfield area other than portable restrooms. So for this particular project, we would like to put our bathroom, prefabricated bathroom in this little U-shaped design I've done there. And with this, it's kind of a raised area. This will give us a little bit of flood protection in case we do have an issue that comes up. There will be stairs across the front and it will have ADA access ramps come up around the backside to the bathroom unit. This is a two-stall bathroom unit that we are proposing. It's going to be the exact same bathroom that we installed at Heritage Park this time last year. And with that, I'll answer any questions, concerns.
Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Trump?
As it relates to the, the cost of the Heritage Park bathroom, you said it's the same size, exact same one. What was, what did that one come in?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. This particular unit is $98,728.77 for the two-stall, family-style restroom.
And that is what we put in at Heritage?
Yes, sir.
And was that, I'm sure the price was different, but you recall what it was?
Seventy-two thousand at the time, a year ago.
Sounds about right with this economy?
And with that, I did forget to mention as well, this particular site work will be a little bit more extensive with the stairs that we plan to install, the ADA ramp. And we will have to put a lift station behind the bathroom unit and have it pumped to a current lift station that we have up by the concession stand area. So with that, that, that estimated cost for that particular part of the project, we're looking at about $45,000 to $50,000 in additional cost.
Thank you, sir. How long, once this is approved, how long do you think it will take to complete?
I have been told 60 to 90 days for manufacturing time. Typically, they say it's a little bit longer than that. Just depending on the features that we go with on the inside. And that's mostly, do you go with a porcelain steel toilet? What kind of hand dryers do you want? But last, the last one we purchased was pretty much on schedule with 90 days. And then it comes from Washington State and it takes about two-week delivery. Once I get the confirmation that they're delivering, then I use their preferred vendor to do their site work plumbing. And at that point, they begin their work and it takes about two weeks.
I think it's fabulous because if you've ever ran at Bowling Park in the summer. And the Port John's right there, so.
Or band camp that's out there and they have to.
I say vote on it now.
And there's no longer a trail up to my house.
We're just gonna knock on your door.
Let's not knock on Joel's door.
I guess at Bowling Park, we don't need a dog. Dogs aren't allowed.
I don't think that would make much sense. No, ma'am.
Anything else for Mr. Dodson? Thank you, Mr. Dodson.
Thank you.
Item A, discussion of 2024 council meeting dates. Ms. Fortner?
Yes, thank you. Included in your packet is a 2024 calendar, which I've highlighted the first and third Thursdays of each month, which would be your regularly scheduled meetings. There are two dates that I wanted to propose that you want to move. The first is the first Thursday in July, which falls on. The second being the second Thursday in September, because that falls in line with Cherokee County School District's fall break. And we have in the past moved that date because there are so many that are out of town and not able to attend. But this is just for your consideration. At the next meeting, I would propose we adopt the 2024 meeting calendar with any changes that you would like.
And obviously, we discuss this every year, but we always, we always like to adopt the calendar for the year so we can get that published, especially for. Public hearings and zoning hearings and applications and all, just so that is published and. Gives also staffs a heads up for those dates, so those hearings can be scheduled and, and also the public can be notified of when we will be meeting before the year, so. Obviously, July 4th date makes sense. And I believe this past year was the only year I recall in the past 10 that we actually moved a council meeting based on. On school holidays, but again, it's up to council discussion on that, so.
You're welcome.
Obstinate.
For those of us with children.
But I guess we'll, Ms. Fortner, say be discussion and voting on this the next meeting, so.
And you can either move it ahead a week or behind. I don't know that it really.
Yeah.
I think you could either move the meeting ahead a week or behind a week.
July, we'd have to move it ahead a week to keep it in July. And then. September, I guess. If council wants to, to move that date. Ahead as well. Be up to council if you guys want to move that date, so. If you guys want to think about that and give any thoughts to Ms. Fortner?
I'll just give you my two cents.
Okay.
July 11th, which would be the second Thursday, looks good to me.
Okay.
And I think September 12th would be a good time to have the September meeting. And that would give the week off of fall break, if that's what it's called. And then also the next week for any recuperation from said vacations.
That's a good point. At least the last two weeks in September, if anybody wants to take a longer break. You know the thoughts on that? So, Ms. McGrew, what you're proposing is September meetings would be September 5th and September 12th.
Yes. July 11th and 18th.
And July 11th and 18th.
Mr. Mayor, I heard you don't celebrate the Fourth of July, so are you sure you want to move that?
Yeah, yeah. I don't celebrate anyway, you know.
It's such a comagine.
Yeah. You have thoughts?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So. Item I, discussion of possible restriping project Laurel Canyon Parkway at Longleaf Drive. Mr. Peppers?
Ms. McGrew may want to make a statement on this one. This is an item that she brought to our attention.
Thank you for considering this and giving us feedback. And we have another couple of suggestions. So we may actually need more public input.
Sure.
But I'm eager to hear your suggestions on this.
So we had, we had received concerns from some residents off of Longleaf Drive. You'll see that on the left-hand side of your screen. The concern is, at this point right now, you've got. Four lanes of divided roadway that converge into two lanes as you're going into the greater side of Laurel Canyon neighborhood. And at this point right now, what happens is the two lanes that are coming in from 140 merge down to one. And then the one lane that's coming out of Laurel Canyon divides into two, where we have the median towards the middle of the screen. The concern is the ability of residents to easily turn in and out of their neighborhood. So thinking about turning in, just to give you a little bit of, of understanding. As you're coming into Laurel Canyon, you're going up a hill and then you're coming down a hill towards that Longleaf Drive. Before you go back up the big hill into the, into the larger part of the neighborhood. So as residents are coming in and they're slowing down to make that right-hand turn. Drive, you have cars that are coming fast behind them. And either trying to merge over one way or, or not slowing down or going around and, and it becomes a traffic issue for those residents. Additionally, for those residents, if they should go up into Laurel Canyon to use the clubhouse, for instance, the amenity, which is theirs. When they come back down and they make the left-hand turn back into Longleaf, they have the traffic coming down the hill. That may be going fast, that's not slowing down and allowing them a safe turn into Longleaf. We had a meeting with residents, invited them here at City Hall to listen to some of the concern and talk about some potential options. One of the, one of the requests from the residents initially was, could we, could we do. All stop at that particular location? Unfortunately, that's not an option because the volumes of cross-traffic of the main road versus the secondary road. Don't match the uniformity of the transportation standards that were required to meet from federal and state organizations. There was one resident that asked about a roundabout. There's not enough right-of-way that the city owns there. That would be a very expensive project. Should mention also that Longleaf Drive is a private road. When Laurel Canyon was developed. Longleaf Drive includes a wooden bridge and the city at the time did not want to take ownership of that particular roadway. So when that pod was platted, it was platted and Longleaf Drive was listed as a private road. An additional concern from residents was the angle of the intersection. So making the right-hand turn in. When vehicles turn in, it's, it's tight, the way that intersection comes in into Laurel Canyon Parkway. Unfortunately, and it's a little difficult to see on this map, there's also storm inlet in that area. There's some utility issues on that corner as well, which make it. Prohibited from a cost standpoint to, to shave off any of that particular area without some significant, significant infrastructural improvements. The city engineer and I, Ms. Watson, had a conversation with Practical Design Partners and asked them about options for restriping in this area. And what you have before you is an option where the two lanes that are coming in from 140. Instead of having those merge down into one lane, the outside lane becomes a right-turn-only lane into Longleaf. And the through traffic that would be going into the rest of Laurel Canyon would stay on the inside or the left-hand lane through that intersection. Additionally, the traffic that's leaving the larger portion of Laurel Canyon headed back out to 140. Would be restricted to the right-hand lane leaving Laurel Canyon. And the traffic coming out of Longleaf would be able to make a protected left turn. On the inside lane when it breaks into two lanes, leaving that part of the neighborhood. This was the design that we were able to come up with. To give you some scopes, it's about $11,000 for the striping. Suggestion would also be to do some additional milling to clean up that area before the striping's done. So the total cost of that goes up to $45,000 for that particular intersection. We did have the design done. One of the, one of the suggestions that I would have for council is on a project like this. That if, if council so wishes to move forward on this, that we would provide this to homeowners associations and residents out there. With a period of maybe 30 days to receive feedback and comment, so that we could look at other issues that come up, other suggestions that are out there. Consolidate all of that information into one particular report, so we can then sit back down with our engineering consultants and go over those. Before coming back to you with some suggestions, tweaks, changes, what have you. This particular issue did come up when we were doing our transportation master plan. And so this is one of those projects that we consider to be kind of the low-hanging fruit of things that could be quicker action versus long-time projects. So we wanted to get this before you, get it before the public and then answer any questions you might have on the project. And if, if it's okay with you, send this information out to the residents and have a period of feedback on it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Ms. Watson's here as well. She might have some more technical expertise on any questions that you might have as well.
Appreciate the work that's gone into it and the thought. I do think sending it to the residents there for additional feedback. Is important. I know we had another project on East Main Street that's part of the master plan that seemed low-hanging fruit. And seemed to be easy and things that the residents want, but then when we started to act on it. Residents, half of them didn't want it, so we spent a lot of time and effort and then decided to abandon that project. So I think making sure that, that this is a solution that everyone in the community wants or can live with. And again, improves the safety of, of all the, the residents in, in Laurel Canyon. Is important, so I agree with that, that approach is good, so I support that. Ms. Schmidt?
So Longleaf Drive is a private road, so the Laurel Canyon HOA pays to maintain that road?
In that particular pod, there's a special assessment, I believe, that those.
So only the homeowners on Longleaf?
Correct.
And how many homes are on Longleaf, just out of curiosity?
Oh, gosh.
I mean, is like 40, 100?
Thirty-seven.
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 Just curious. And then just really kind of a comment, this is surprisingly similar to the entrance to River Green. Just past the daycare center into the new section called Academy and the retreat. And we have a dedicated right-turn lane onto Academy and then it becomes the main drag. So if somebody wanted to see what that looks like, you should come to River Green. I mean, just if there's, I mean, I, I seem to understand that maybe some people are worried about this striping project. So if, if you wanted to see how it's been working for many, many years in another neighborhood, I'm just saying it's quite similar in River Green.
And I would mention too, we, we have a similar situation to this as you're coming in East Main Street towards the bus entrance at Hasty. Where you've got merging of lanes from four down to two. You've got traffic that's making a right-hand turn. You've got cars that are trying to go around. So this was actually one of the things that we looked at in the transportation master plan as a potential striping fix for that particular location as well. It tends to be an issue that we have where we have that merging or diversion of lanes and a road coming in or an entrance coming in at the same location.
Unfortunately, we don't have the power to make everyone be a polite driver. Another problem we also have in River Green. Is there, is what, is there, Ms. McGrew, a problem with this according to feedback you've gotten already or not?
I, I think they'd like to explore some other options and I, I get the feeling that some people don't see how this would work. And, you know, it's a concept that I'm not used to either, but I have been to River Green, so I know how it does work, so.
Okay, just curious?
Yeah.
And that's really part of the reason why we would want to have a formal feedback process, so that it's clear. We want the feedback. We want to take all of that information. We want to summarize it into one document. And then sit down with the engineers and have that conversation. Because, for example, there might be a concern from a resident on Longleaf, but we may also have a concern from somebody else in the neighborhood. Because this will impact many, we need, we need to have a process for getting that information.
Is there accident data from this intersection?
We would pull that. I'm not aware of any specific data.
So then, so we're talking about a cost of $45,000? So then, so we're talking about a cost of $45,000. Is there a math, number one, where's the funding specifically, just for the record? And then, is there any kind of math problem, or we're sure, like this, I guess, the cost versus, and the safety, like, do those, how are we measuring? What projects, you know what I mean? Like, what's the measurement for, if somebody wants a roundabout, that's obviously $300,000. This is just striping and milling, and it's $45,000. I mean, I saw a lot of raised eyebrows in our audience tonight when that cost came up. So how does that work out?
Well, I mean, ultimately, it's a local road. So since it's our road, we have the ability to make certain changes on it. What we can't do is we can't go against the traffic standards, which would jeopardize our ability to get other state and federal transportation dollars. So where we can make certain improvements in things like striping, that would be the option that we have. You know, as you can imagine, if we start looking at any types of changes to curbs, turning radius, and things like that, now you're talking about property acquisition, potential condemnation, depending who owns that property. You know, that becomes a much more expensive project. So in this area, we tried to take into consideration the concerns from the residents in coming up with a concept design.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Waterman?
Ms. McGrew, just correct me if I'm wrong, but that intersection, isn't that, if you're going back towards the clubhouse, isn't that intersection kind of the start of the upgrade? You know, going up that long hill?
It is not. That's a little bit further up.
It's further up.
This is a valley where there are two hills, but that's not the steepest part.
Right. But, and I'm not saying that I've done this, but I have lots of friends of mine.
Asking for a friend, Mr. Waterman?
Starts, for better terms, speeding, probably at that intersection to dodge the golf balls once they get to that point, on the more elevated area.
Yeah.
But it's both ways, because I know that that corridor right there is, I've known quite a few cars that have been hit. I didn't know if that was, if that factored into the cause of speed along that road and at that intersection, at least coming into the neighborhood.
Mr. Waterman, did you just say people are driving faster to avoid poor golfers?
It's not any of my balls.
Well, the other thing to remember too, when you're going from one lane to two lanes, the natural reaction of a driver is to speed up, because you've got more capacity in the lanes. Additionally, when you're narrowing from two down to one, and you've got multiple vehicles that are merging, you have the capacity for one driver to speed up and one driver to slow down, but when you're also making that right-hand turn, that's when you get into those particular issues. So, you know, all of these pieces don't necessarily have to be done together. If, for instance, the residents said, you know, "We don't like this part of it, but we like this part of it," they could be done independently. So for example, the two lanes that are coming in from 140, the outside could become a dedicated right-hand turn lane, even without making any changes to the other direction of travel.
I think that's the best, just put the feedback mechanism out there for 30 days and then see what the residents, you know, what their feedback is, and then develop a plan around it, if possible.
I think any improvement to the residents, to safety of residents out there is, you know, a good investment. And any data, you know, on accidents, obviously important. Also, we're investing in, you know, investing in keeping accidents from happening, which is even better investment. And then, the potential viability of this plan, if it is, if we do act upon it, you know, it's going to require education. I mean, the fact that drivers, if we do do this plan, is going to require a change of habits, and, you know, so that this is coming, and this is, you're going to require, you're going to have to change your habits in this area if we do act on this plan. So it's education and information's always good to be shared, so. But I look forward to getting some solutions here and getting them enacted as soon as possible. If we do any phases, and, I mean, having a dedicated right-turn lane seems to be obvious, but if that's a good first start, then I hope it's something we can do, you know, quickly. So, but I think getting the feedback and getting forward feedback, and if the residents there have other ideas that we haven't thought about, you know, then we should hear them. So. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Peppers, just a couple of questions. Would you restate why cushions are inappropriate for this area?
Speed cushions?
Yes.
It would be based upon the slope and the volume of traffic. You cannot apply speed reduction devices when there are certain slopes of roadway, psych distances, and things like that.
And these slopes prohibit the speed cushions?
Correct.
And would you explain to me, please, why we couldn't widen the mouth of Longleaf there by cutting out a part of the left side? I believe their monument is there, but you had stated you didn't think that could be done.
I just don't know that it's going to make a big enough impact on the project, because now you're going to be skewing the traffic that's leaving Longleaf further back towards the slope and the hill to also then make the left-hand turn back onto Laurel Canyon Parkway. There could also be some issues with right-of-way and utilities in that area.
Thank you. And if you do this striping, where people coming out of Longleaf and they're going to make a left onto Laurel Canyon Parkway, would you use restrictive materials so that they would have to turn into the left lane and not be able to swing wide and go into the right lane?
Yeah, I mean, we've had success with ceramic domes before in certain areas. That's something that we would just have to look at with the engineer.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So just to follow up on this, what our plans would be, would be to put this together along with a memo, basically sending it out to the homeowners associations out there, asking if they send it out to their residents, letting them know about this particular project that we're looking into and the information that we have. We would, based on where we're at now in the calendar, I would probably say that we would have some type of feedback period that goes into January. We don't want to cut off feedback around the holiday or anything like that. So it may be a little bit longer than 30 days or what have you. But we would note in there, the feedback period, we'd note in there where to send comments and emails and things like that, so that we could consolidate all of that information into a report, and then we will come back to council at a future date with more information on the project.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Item J, discussion of draft intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County School District to participate in Canton's tax allocation district. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have a tax allocation district that the council approved when authorizing redevelopment powers in 2021. That district was certified by the Department of Revenue in 2022, and at this time, we're ready to start working with our partners with the school district in the county on their portions of funding, which could be allocated to the tax allocation district. In working with Mr. Dyer, he has had experience with tax allocation districts in other jurisdictions. And so we took some information from the city of Holly Springs, who has an agreement with Cherokee County for tax allocation district revenues, and tweaked that document to fit our particular tax allocation district. So what you have before you is a draft of that. We're not asking that council adopt this. We just wanted to have the conversation with the idea that we would transmit it to the school district staff for their review and their comment, so that hopefully we could come to a conclusion and an agreement in a timely manner. I will note that there is one particular section that we've added to ours that does not exist in others. And in short, what we've asked for in here, it's in Article 4, so it's Section 4.2, and it just states that if the Cherokee County School District agrees that if they choose to sell any property that they own that lies within our redevelopment area in the city, would have the first opportunity to purchase the property before it's offered for sale to the public. I will remind you that our tax allocation district includes the area of Cherokee High School, current Cherokee High School, Cherokee North, which is the former Canton Elementary School, and all the recreational facilities that are associated with that. One of the reasons why we wanted to put this in the agreement is, at this time, there's not a decision that's been made by the school district on what the future of that property is when the new high school opens. And I believe the city has an interest in that site as it relates to recreation, programming, and facilities. So we wanted to put that particular item in here, so that that would at least spur a conversation, should they decide not to utilize that property for school purpose.
Certainly a great agreement, a great addition to this agreement, and just ask council to kind of re-ew that, and I think it's certainly something we want to act and move forward on. We had the TAD in place. Certainly, we can have the school district participating in that as well. It's only going to accelerate our progress in that district and our funds in those districts to work with. So I think the sooner we can transmit that to them and continue our conversations with them, and hopefully get them on board as partners, the more progress we're going to make. So any questions at this time for Mr. Peppers? Thank you.
Item K, discussion and possible action on intergovernmental agreement for redevelopment of property within the tax allocation district. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Mayor, I have a complaint.
Yes, Mr. Roach?
Step out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roach. Appreciate that.
As we've discussed with city council before, we do have a tax allocation district, and part of the reason for the tax allocation district is the ability for the city to encourage redevelopment and also improve infrastructure within that area. As we are working on meeting the needs of that particular district, staff would recommend that council consider opening up basically a line of credit to the Downtown Development Authority, whose district incorporates the entire tax allocation district, which would allow them to act on behalf of the city in acquiring property that might be necessary for projects within that tax allocation district. The way this intergovernmental agreement is writ, the Downtown Development Authority would seek your approval on any use of those funds, so you will get to act on that. But basically, we would pre-fund our tax allocation district through a line of credit of up to $8 million and allow the Downtown Development Authority to start negotiating for any purchase of real estate that's necessary to further the work of that particular redevelopment power. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Mr. Dyer's also here. He wrote up the intergovernmental agreement, so if you have any more technical questions, he can probably answer those.
Yeah, certainly, this is something we have discussed. Basically, puts our money where our mouth is, and we've become the biggest investor in our own tax allocation district and really control our own destiny, I think, with this agreement. And only encourage, begin to encourage additional investment by outside investors into the district. So I know it's something we've talked about. We've had the TAD in place now, I think, for a year, I guess, so. And I think it's just something really important for us to move forward with. And again, council will have final say on any investments in the district, so I just think it's a great progress and will certainly help us move this initiative forward, so. Questions, comments, additional discussion? Ms. Schmidt?
If there's no further discussion, I would just say that I'm really glad to be, that the city of Canton has a DDA that's being used the way that a DDA should be used. So it's a very exciting time, and I'd like to move to approve the IGA with the Canton Downtown Development Authority for the redevelopment of property within the tax allocation district.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All members voted to approve with the absence of Mr. Roach, who had a conflict. So measure passes. Mr. Peppers?
Just a couple of items that I would like to make note of you. As you recall, at our last council meeting, council agreed to move forward with hiring or engaging Mercer Group, Alan Reddish, on the executive search for the police chief. We have been working with them. They are putting together all of the recruitment information at this time, as well as the recruitment brochure, and handling some stakeholder things for the city. Our hope is to have the position posted for applicants on December the 18th, and for that to run through January 19th as it relates to the application process. At the end of January, it's the hope of the consultant that they would be able to provide to me a list of potential semi-finalists for my review. Then they would use the month of February to set up potential interviews and do background checks, so that we could start interviews on that position first of March. Hopefully have the position offered and the individual in place by the end of March. All of that, of course, would be negotiated with the applicant and semi-finalist as it relates to that. So I wanted to give you that update. We've also started sharing information with Condrion Associates, who's doing our compensation study, and they've started work on that. And yesterday, Mr. Ingram, Ms. Waters, and I met with Mark III, who's our new broker on our health and health insurance and benefits plan, to start off that particular process, and had a great meeting with them. We have lots of activities that are going on around the city, because it is the holiday season. It is Thursday night, so if you love downtown, you can go hop in a wagon and ride around and look at the lights tonight. Tomorrow night, we have Christmas in Canton, which is a great event with vendors and opportunities to do activities with your family. And then, of course, Saturday, we'll have the Merry Market that starts around 2:00 and runs until 6:00, when we have the Christmas Parade, which, this is the 36th year we've worked with the Canton Optimists Club on the Christmas Parade downtown. We are hoping for really good weather. I understand that Christmas Pete will be with us, so that's exciting as well. And so that'll be a great event that we have. And there's other events that are going on through the season. Encourage our residents, if they want to know what's going on in the community, to visit explorecanton.g. com. There's great information there about all of our events and activities. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Okay. Seeing none. Just checking to make sure there's no council in front of the two stables.
I have nothing this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, and real estate.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate, personnel, and litigation.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.